Well, welcome. Tonight, we're going to have a chance to meet all four people who are going for a position that's going to influence more than any other position in town government. These are the people who are going to be setting policy as to what your children face and how the school best meets their needs. You know, I've always said, when I remember by the time my kids hit high school, I was lucky to get an hour at night before they'd run away and do something and be busy. These people are going to be influencing six, eight hours a day of your child's life in the most formative phase of their lives. So I thank you for those joining, and for those who aren't here, I hope that they find out that there's this show, there's debates that come up at the high school, at the senior center, the town crier holds sessions, so there's plenty of opportunity to get to know each person. So first, let's start with introductions. RJ, you're on first.
I'm RJ Sheedy, I'm a current school committee member and I'm running for a full term on the school committee.
Derek?
How you doing? I'm Derek Sobers. I'm a resident of 13 years, and I'm happily married with three kids, and two of them in the school system.
John?
Thank you, Al. John Erickson, Ten Rosenthal Ave here in Milford. Lifelong Milford resident, even though I hate that phrase in this context, but I'm seeking my third term on the school committee.
Robin?
Hi, I'm Robin Bratica. I'm also a lifelong Milford resident. I graduated from Milford High School in 2002. 10 years after that, I graduated again from the University of Rhode Island with my PhD in school psychology. And for the past 10 years, I've been working in education, including five years in the Milford Public Schools as a school psychologist, adjustment counselor, and special education team chairperson, and I'm also mom to an eight-year-old girl in the second grade at Brookside Elementary.
RJ, you picked the short straw or the long straw, whichever way you look at it. So you get the first question. RJ, I'm from Milford. Why should I vote for you?
I think you should vote for me, Al, and everybody in Milford because I believe, and I hope you believe, that I've proven myself to be a hard worker. I am dedicated to wanting to serve on the school committee. I am entrusted to do the job, and I'm doing the job, and I want to continue to do the job of the school committee member. So I'm asking everybody to put their trust in me and to give me a full term on the school committee.
Derek, you're up next.
Thanks. I'm running for a school committee because I have children in this school system, at Woodland and at Memorial, and I'm very invested in the future of all the kids in this town. I have time to commit to this. I'm willing to serve. It's very tough for parents to be able to do that because we all have jobs, we all have just running around with kids. It's not easy to do, and I'm willing to do that hard work and, you know, serve this community.
John, I'm from Milford. Why should I vote for you?
Thank you again, Al. I'd ask that you vote for me because I'd ask that you look at the body of work that I've been a part of in the past six years on the school committee, or for six years there was a short gap, but the work that our committee has done in those six years has been monumental in terms of what's been accomplished in Milford. I've been a part of a number of different committees in terms of who's been sitting on them. I think if you look at what our committees have done collectively and what I've been a part of personally and individually, that you'll see that I've been working very hard for the needs of the district, and we have some very high-level accomplishments that we've done. And with that said, we have a lot, maybe more challenging tasks ahead of us, so I'd ask for your continued support.
Robin, why should I vote for you?
I would start off by saying I'm a mom. The decisions made by the school committee impact me greatly. They impact my child, they impact my family, and so I'm very committed to the school committee. It wouldn't just be some evening night meetings a month, it would be every day. Those decisions are impacting what I do and my family. But beyond that, I truly view serving on the school committee as an act of public service. I recently became more interested in being involved in my community by becoming a town meeting member last year, and though I enjoy that and plan to continue to serve in that role for as long as my precinct will have me, I know my education and experience would be better served on the school committee, so I would like to have that role as well. I am very committed to showing my daughter as well that it is important to not just have thoughts and talk about those different things, but to actually take action and to stand up and be a voice for change and when you want to do what you believe. And so I think it would be a way for me to use that education and experience to give back to my community.
Derek, during your individual show, we asked you what are the three biggest challenges you think you'd face. Tonight, since we have four people, you're going to narrow it down to what do you think is the biggest challenge you would face on the school committee?
Space, space, space. It's got to be space. All the schools are overloaded, especially Stacy. We have to figure out a way to, with increased enrollment, we have to figure out a way to get a new school, get some renovations, add on to what we have for infrastructure in order to, you know, be able to properly educate our children.
John, what do you think would be the biggest challenge you'll face?
So it's very similar to what Derek just mentioned, but it's facilities, more so than space. The condition of our facilities, the age of our facilities, enrollment is increasing, and I agree wholeheartedly, and that was one of my three comments in the previous interview, but the facilities need attention. We've been talking about the condition of the high school for a long time now. You know, the high school's 50 years old. It's at the end of its expected life, whether our enrollment's up or down. So I think that, you know, and the rest are at capacity, and they've been at capacity for a number of years, so the facilities and the future planning for the facilities, both in terms of physical infrastructure and how we're going to, you know, arrange these grade levels or organize or reorganize, is the paramount concern right now for me.
Robin?
Right now, I think the biggest issue that we're facing, both as a school committee and as a district, is addressing the emotional and mental health needs of our students. Though I don't disagree with the points made about space, the first thing we need to be doing is looking at our students and thinking about what has the past two years done to their emotional health and development. We have really great programs in place in the district around social-emotional learning, but those programs were developed not just from our district, but nationwide by the individuals who produce them, based on a normal developmental trajectory that does not include wearing masks for two years during a pandemic. We don't know right now the impact of having disrupted learning, having to wear masks has on basic skills like empathy development, perspective-taking. How can you develop social awareness when you are a kindergartner who is now in second grade and only had a few months of seeing peers smile? And so this, I think, is the most pressing issue that we need to really be thinking about. I cannot begin to say that I have all the answers, but it is something that the school committee will need to be looking at very closely in the near future.
RJ, the biggest challenge you see coming?
I will agree with the guys in the panel and say facilities. The Milford Public School District has made it clear that Milford High School is one of the neatest buildings in the schools. We are continuing to submit statement of interest to the state to help get state funding for the building. So it's my priority, if I'm lucky enough to be elected for the next three or hopefully maybe six more years, that we get accepted to the MSBA and that we get some state funding for a new building. In that time, we also have to address the needs of our elder facilities, such as Stacy's, such as Woodland that just went online, both of which are either at capacity or very close to capacity. So we have to address the spacing needs there as well. So my biggest issue that I would focus on would be our facilities.
John, somebody new coming to Milford. Parent, basic question, will my child get a good education in the Milford school system?
Yes, your child will get a very good education in the Milford school system, regardless of what their needs are, whether they're on an advanced placement level or on a high needs level or anything in between. I believe in both the curriculum and the personnel, the teachers that we have here. As long as they're applying themselves, they'll get a very good education.
Robin, will your child get a good education in the Milford school system?
Absolutely. We have some of the most dedicated educators here. The people in our district that are working day in and day out tirelessly with our students recognize that we have over 50% students who are identified as high needs, and yet they choose to come here each and every day and work with our students and support them. And you don't have to take my word for it, we have students every year who are accepted to the top colleges across the country. If that's not an indicator that our children are getting an excellent education, I don't know what is.
RJ, will my child get a good education in Milford?
Absolutely, they will, and if I'm lucky enough to have kids in Milford, I would absolutely send them to our schools. I think the outcomes of our students in my class and in the classes since have only proven that we have some of the best education to offer. So yes, I think Milford schools do give a good education.
Derek?
Absolutely. I've moved three times, all in Milford. I haven't left. I've stayed here, and I love this town. You're going to get a great education. We have three people who graduated from here who are running for school committee, two of them are already on the committee. So yes, it is a place where you can get a great education. I have people who have come here who wanted to chose this town instead of going to other towns. This is a place where you know you can have your needs met.
Robin, people read the papers, read the test scores, and they're perplexed as to why Milford's scores are lower than all the towns around us. What would you say to somebody who wants to know why?
Yeah, so I would say, let's actually look at the scores and look at what they're measuring. So if you take our students who are our top performers, their scores are not that different from the other schools around us. Our students who are high-achieving, who are testing well on the MCAS, they can be put up against any other town and they can compete. We have other students in our district who, like we said, are high needs. It is not fair to take students who are just learning the English language for the first time and to give them the same test as native English speakers. It is not fair to take kids who have just moved to this country for the first time and expect them to understand the different cultural types of questions that we're asking on those tests. So I would say, what are these tests measuring? Are they truly measuring ELA abilities, science abilities, math abilities, or are they measuring things like acculturation and language acquisition? Because that's just not a fair assessment of our kids.
RJ, why are our scores not indicative of the kids?
If you were to take every single high-performing kid that we have and put them up against the kids of Franklin or Halston or Hawkinson, their scores would be just as good as their kids. But what's wrong with Milford's scores? There's nothing wrong with Milford's scores. We happen to be a district that has over 50% of our kids that are high needs. Those are kids that are English language learners, special needs, and low-income kids. Those are all kids that are coming to school every day with a lot going on and sometimes learning, and taking a test isn't the easiest thing for them. So I don't think one score from one test taken one day of the year is a good way to measure our students and what their outcomes are.
Derek?
It's a diverse school. We have so many different things going on with every single student, and I can tell you right now, myself, I wasn't a great test taker, but I know that you can still be successful. And that is something that, there's so much more than just the, that goes into schools than just the test scores. In order to measure a student, you have to look beyond just that. The social-emotional learning that you get in the school compared to other towns, it's immeasurable, that those things that are super intangible and tangible are here, present in this town. This is a place where if you come to school here, you're going to get a robust education that's not just centered on the books.
John?
So I agree wholeheartedly with every other comment that was made here already, and the only thing I would add is just, you know, the standardized test score is an evaluation at one point, one day in time, right? For years, we'd hear the chatter, tomorrow's MCAS day, make sure your kids get up and get a good breakfast. And that just qualifies that it's the performance that day. With that, again, I agree with everything that was said here, and I don't put a whole lot of stock in standardized testing overall, and I do recognize the challenges that certain Milford students have that reflects on our overall average, but again, the high performers are doing as well as any high performers in any comparable community or neighboring community.
RJ, we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars adding to security, a Milford school SWAT team. Is Milford a safe place for children to go to school?
I, as a student, have always felt safe in our schools. I, as a candidate and I, as a school committee member, have never been made aware of any substantial incident in our school and anybody who has felt super-duper unsafe in our schools. So yes, I believe our schools are safe for our students and our community. In fact, I think it's one of the safest places in our community for our students.
Was it a good investment, what we spent?
It was needed at the time, it's what the town felt was needed at the time.
Derek, is Milford a safe place to be, and how do you feel about the money we put into, I guess you'd call it, the school SWAT team?
Yeah, I believe the Milford schools, if you're talking about on a mass level of threat, yes, I believe Milford schools are safe. As far as the money spent on a SWAT team, no, I haven't actually been very comfortable with that. That is something that has cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars every year, and as a response team, well, if they haven't responded to anything, it's been hundreds of thousands of dollars for peace of mind. Every school around this country, that community, they don't believe that something's going to happen in that town until it does. And that is something that, we have local police who can respond in a timely fashion, I believe. And so I'm not quite sure if that was necessary, but I do understand the reasoning behind it. I just think we need to revisit that when the time comes.
John?
So yeah, I do think that Milford students are very safe. I am pleased with the job that Milford Police is doing there and has done there and the resource officers are doing and have done. I think Milford is very safe. As a school committee member, we're made aware of every threat, and we're made aware whether they think it's highly credible or somewhat credible, and we're not made aware of the specifics, but I can tell you, over my years, that I've heard of a number of threats and a lot of investigations that have gone on. Again, I'm not trying to say that I have the specific details, I don't, but we are made aware, and I've been very pleased with the results of the investigations and the efforts and the security that it offers our students and our children.
Was it a worthwhile investment?
Which specifically?
SWAT team?
I'd say yes. I'd say yes, I'd say that it's like so many other things in life, it's worth it when you need it. If, you know, if it doesn't rain, you don't need an umbrella, but it's, I think it was a well-thought-out, I think our chief at the time embraced it and did a great job implementing it.
Robin, what do you think?
I think that it is more complex than just simply bringing in school resource officers. So I do think that that is certainly part of what a safety plan should be for a school, and yes, I do think it's a good investment to have the school resource officers. I don't think that they can work in isolation, and so working best is when they team with the school social workers or the school adjustment counselors. When I was in the role of an adjustment counselor, I would work closely with the SRO. I also have a unique position answering this question in that I was an individual who was involved in conducting many risk assessments when I worked in the district, and so I do think that the school resource officers can be extremely helpful if you need to do a wellness check to make sure a student is safe when they're not even on the grounds, when they're at home, they can help you with that. If you have a student who's in imminent harm, they can help get them to the emergency room and bring a counseling staff person with them who then can feel safe and be transported back to the school. So it really, yes. To answer the question briefly, yes, I do think it was a good investment, they are essential. I do think it's a bit more nuanced, though, and they really need to team with mental health professionals and a school safety team.
Please.
To that point, that money, which is about $650,000 a year, could be reinvested into the school system. It could be invested into mental health needs, it could be invested into behavioral department. Like that, to me, is something that we could do to be proactive and help prevent a future event that is absolutely tragic and we don't want to happen. To me, that is what we can go with that. The SWAT team, they are militarized, they are ready to respond to something that would happen at the school. So we have a police department that's very capable of that. If they are also police officers of Milford on that SWAT, they can go right back into the local department with everything they've learned, and then we can just go from there.
Okay, any other comments? Then we'll move on to, we've mentioned that the Milford student population is high needs. I believe we're up to close to 50% of the kids at the high school who get free lunches, and that's an indication that their families are living on, I think it's less than $34,000 a year. A lot of people worry that putting their child into a high-need group can force the teacher to teach to the lowest common denominator, and their children won't get pushed as hard as they could. What would you say to that, Derek?
Yeah, I reject that. I don't like that line of thinking. We have opportunities with every single child that comes into this school system. Every child is valuable, every child has potential, and we need to, as a fiduciary responsibility, take care of the needs of every single child. They're not a burden, they are someone's child. And as a parent, I want the mindset of the school committee to be, we'll do whatever it takes, and regardless of what the challenges are, we will do as a happy warrior to make sure we provide for those kids.
John?
Yeah, so here's the thing, that's a very complex question, and there's not a simple answer. I don't know if there's an overall answer, but what I look to do as a school committee member is to look to our administration and our school leadership and our teachers as to what they need. Do I think it's being taught to the common denominator? No. I don't know the intricacies of being a school administrator or teacher, nor do I profess to, but I do know the intricacies of being a school committee member. And what we do every year is we look at the needs that the administration and the building principals bring forward to us, and we approve some or many or few initiatives based on our financial condition, our financial expectations, and looking at that with the overall needs presented across the board in the district. So I do look to these professionals to tell us their needs and to do the best we can in advocating for funds for that in context with, you know, advocating for the financial stability of the town.
Robin, what do you think?
So as a parent to a child who's gone to Shining Star in Brookside, and then having worked at Stacy Middle School myself, I can say from watching an array of different educators in this district, they do a really great job, and we should give them credit for how well they can differentiate instruction. Our educators are able to really meet the needs typically of about 80% of the kids, just within the general education classroom, by, you know, using small groups when needed here or there for reading or math instruction, but our educators do a really great job. And so then what happens when kids have greater needs that need more support than that? Well, we have programs in place, we have personnel in place, we have reading and math interventionists who can pull kids out and work with them on those skills. We have a system for referrals to special education if students need that more individualized support. We have a really robust ELL department that works with our students who are English language learners, so we have the people in place to take care of all of our kids.
RJ?
I would agree with everybody on this stage and what they've said. If you're asking me, does Milford High School provide an equitable education? Do we teach our students to the level that they're at? Yes, I think we do.
Loaded question. Is Milford investing enough in its education?
Financially?
Financially?
Financially? Are we investing enough? Yes, this has been a hot topic for probably all of my time on the school committee.
And mine.
And yours, long before mine, on the finance committee side of things. But what we're doing is advocating something that's sustainable, funds that are sustainable, taxes that are sustainable, allocations that are sustainable. And you and I have talked about statistics a number of times. You know, the chapter 78 has basically doubled in 10 years, over the past 10 years. The local contribution to the school operating budget has gone up not nearly that much, maybe 20%. But then we look at the indirect expenses and indirect spending, and we see a little bit of a different picture, right? And I've mentioned this to you, you've always said that it's 60/40 or 40/60, no matter how you split it. We're 40% of the overall budget with our operating budget or 60% when you include our indirect costs. And from our perspective, this year, our chapter 70 has gone up to an unexpected level, which is a bonus, and another bonus is that the percentage of our budget of indirect spending has decreased steadily over 10 years. Are we spending enough? I'd say cautiously, yes. Do I advocate for more? In certain cases, right, we've talked about our EL challenges, and then why don't we add four teachers? And that's when the finance committee does the gesture, right? But we're trying to do things that are sustainable, given the overall financial picture of the town. We can't do something knee-jerk that would result in an override in two, three, or four years down the road to maintain. I mean, I could talk to you individually for an hour here tonight about this, and I don't want to monopolize this, but no, we don't spend as much per pupil as our neighboring communities that everybody compares us to. Are we spending enough? We're spending enough. Could we spend more? Yes, but if we spend more, there goes the trickle down the road. Where? Where do we put them? Where do we put the teachers? Where do we have the, where do we place added classrooms? So I'm very pleased with what the community has embraced and what our committee has advocated for in the past few years especially. There was a time when I didn't think the community was, a few years ago, supporting us well enough. There was a time a few years prior to that that I didn't think our committee was asking for enough, but right now, today, I think we've struck a nice balance.
Robin, are we investing enough?
I think we are. I'm certainly a proponent of as much state aid as we can get, let's get for our schools, get for our students, absolutely. But in regards to what we're spending, you know, talking about that figure that John just referenced, the per-pupil expenditure, if you're looking at what we're spending as opposed to the state average, yes, we're a little lower. But then you have towns like Martha's Vineyard that are spending $30,000 a year on students, which kind of could drive that state average right up. So I don't think that that is the best indicator for us to determine if we're spending enough on students. What I would say is, let's make sure that we're spending our money wisely, and so if we did get to a point where we felt like, oh no, are we going to be facing cuts, let's look at how we're spending money in the district, not necessarily spending more, but really looking at it maybe from an independent point of view to say, are we spending money in the best way for our kids to make sure we're meeting all of their needs?
RJ, are we investing enough in our education?
I'm greedy, and I would always love for the town to give us more money for the schools because I know that there's a whole bunch of positions and investments that I would love to invest in, but at the same time, I know that we need to be physically conservative and make sure that we can still properly fund our fire department and our police department. When it comes to the town budget, there's more than just what I want as a school committee member for our schools. Do I want the world, do I want the town to be giving us as much money as possible? Of course I do, I want all the money in the world, I'm greedy, I want that. But at the same time, I need to be mindful of the other services that we as a town have to provide to our residences. I'm incredibly grateful that the state funding formula has allocated more money to towns and communities that look like Milford, that gives us more money to play with, and I would always love more money, but do I think Milford's investing enough in its education? Yeah, I think we are.
Derek?
I'm excited about the state aid that's coming in, increased, I like that. I also agree with what John said about the fact that we don't spend as much as our area towns. We should be spending more. We should. However, we need to be very smart about it. It looks to me that between FinCom and the school committee, we do tend to be very smart with our money, so I'm not really worried about that. But I do believe that it's a fluid situation, and the state has recognized that we need more money, so I believe that Milford also should provide more money. But as long as you do it in a smart way, I don't see what the downside is. This is, again, for the kids. There's so many other areas that we can look at for, with a scalpel and really figure out what we're going to do with that, with the funding. Well, I still want to do that with the school, but I can still say we should increase. We should at least be at or above what the area has.
You brought up an interesting question. You brought up an interesting question that wasn't on the list, so you get to ad lib. Two of you are on the school committee, so you're looking inside out, two of you are on the outside right now looking in. How do you see the relationship between the school committee and the rest of the town government and, and the residents?
Starting with me.
Starting with you.
Yep, so I actually really like this question, so thank you for asking. I think that in general, you know, the school committee, I don't think anyone doubts that the school committee has the best interests of our students in mind. So, you know, I think, I, I hope at least nobody would run for this position if that wasn't your goal. The one thing I would say though, as a parent and a community member who's not currently part of the school committee, is that I think that there would be, it would be nice to have an opportunity maybe for a little bit of a feedback loop. So if you look at the different positions within the district, and I'm including the school committee as part of that because they are making very important decisions that impact the district, they're really the only group of individuals that are not getting regular feedback. And so is there a way as a community we can connect and have discussions? Even something as simple as a once a year, one hour, open meet and greet forum before the first school committee meeting? I know that there's the invitation to speak, but as a parent in Milford, if you just want to understand who are these individuals that are representing me, representing my child, I don't necessarily have an agenda item, I just want to know who you are, let's give families that opportunity. But I, I think as a community member, you know, the school committee certainly has our children's interests in, in heart, and they, they are looking out for them, but I just would like there to be more open communication between the school committee and the residents of Milford that they represent.
RJ?
I think the community does a great job at communication. Is there areas that we could do better at? Sure, could we be providing maybe some newsletters and some more communication to our, to our community? Sure, we could all use more communication. Could the select board be doing better at communicating? Sure, could the finance committee do a bad job at communicating and out return to the community? Sure, I don't think that's a singular problem the school committee faces, I think that's an overall town issue that we face.
Derek, what do you think?
That's, that's a good question. As a parent, I know I get text messages almost daily when it comes to what's going on at Woodland, what's going on at Memorial. Like I'm, I am constantly in the loop of where, where things are at. It'd be nice if we could have more transparency and more communication between the school committee, and that's just me as a parent, just me as a, as a member of the community. What is happening inside the school committee? I'm not there, I can't tell you. But that's why I'm running. I'm running so I can be that conduit between the community and the, and the, the school committee and the administrators and the faculty and staff. That is, when, once I, if I can get there, I would love to be able to say, yes, we should make, open up dialogue so we can make sure people are engaged. This is, again, a huge part of this town, and I believe that transparency and communication really is key.
John?
So thank you. So I don't think this was really part of the original question, but I, I just want to comment on the availability and accessibility of the school committee. What I would say is we've, you know, we've, we've tried to go a little extra and hold some office hours a few times a year, but more so than that, we're all elected officials. We answer to every voter in this town. I've been extremely accessible. I don't think there's any better example than chairing this committee during the COVID year. I, I can't tell you how many emails and phone calls I've got and how many I've answered, and trying to address every concern, either one that's directly related to the school committee performance or, you know, administrative decisions, and, and, not that I answer those, but I can coordinate some responses. But as far as coordinating or collaborating with the town as a whole, that's been my mantra since day one on the committee. I came from the municipal government side of, on the experience side, and I've always advocated, and I think every single committee member I've ever served with will tell you, I advocated, let's talk to the finance committee more about the overall state of the town, not the textbooks from 2007. Let's meet with Zach, let's bring Zach into a committee meeting, Zach being our, our finance director, Zach Taylor, and work together as a community. You know, as far as greedy, I'm not greedy, and, and no disrespect, RJ, but I want to do what is sustainable by the town, what's in the town's best interest. I'm not here to advocate just for the school system, I'm here to advocate for every resident, every taxpayer, because it affects us all. Our decisions don't affect just the, the kids in school or just the parents with kids in school, it's to, it's to work as a community together. And I, I think I've very much demonstrated that has been my approach and my goal from day one on here. So it's, I know it wasn't, it wasn't a planned question, but it does hit a very important mark for me.
Well, I think it's hard because people get snapshots. I mean, this is the time of year where the school committee comes in and says, we need $9 billion increase, and the FinCom says we're broke. And then somewhere over the next two months, I've been very proud that you don't have these wars going on that you see in other towns, that somehow when we get together and say, okay, this is what we can really afford, we compromise.
Yeah, and I think this year more than any has been the most rewarding budget season I've gone through as a member of the school committee, and I think my colleagues would agree, and I think the finance committee members would agree. And it's, it's, that hasn't always been the case. You know, a couple of years ago, it was a little bit different climate, and we, we've really grown in working together. We've, I, I can't praise the educational subcommittee of the finance committee enough for attending our meetings, asking questions, being as informed as we are, and it's all for the common goal of doing what's best for Milford, and that's, again, something I, I don't speak very strongly about a lot of things, or maybe I do, but this one I definitely speak very strongly and from the heart about.
Well, I mean, if we keep in perspective that when we say we have two kids in the school system, we have one daughter, we have 4,500 of our kids. And as long as that is the focus, if your heart's in the right place, the rest of you tends to go along with it. RJ? Right, wrong, or indifferent? The amount, the percentage of immigrant children in our school system has an impact. Your opinion, positive, negative, neutral?
I think the immigrant population that we have in Milford definitely brings a positive impact to the experience that you as a student get. Because of that population that we have in our schools, our students are getting a different environment in the building every day than students perhaps in Holliston or Hawkinson. And I think that's a great asset for our students to have because as an ever, ever globalizing world, we can't always work and be in the room and hang around with people that always look and sound and act like us and aren't from the same places as us. So I think that's a great asset that Milford has to our students that other towns cannot provide. When it comes to what services that we get as a town from them, we've seen that because of the chapter 70 increases, we're getting more state funding in order to educate these kids. So is it a burden? No, I don't think it's a burden. I think it's our job as a district to properly educate everything that's doing that comes to our schools, and that's our job that we have, and that's what we got to do.
Derek, what do you think?
I think I love it. I think it's a positive. I mean, your parents are from Portugal, my parents are from Barbados. So I know what it's like to, to grow up in a, a town that's homogeneous, that's not diverse. This town is. This town is built on immigration. We've had, we've had Irish, we've had Italian, we've had Portuguese, we've had Brazilian, we have, that is a foundation of this town, that's a positive. We should be embracing every immigrant that comes into this town, we should be thrilled that we have an opportunity to be able to provide for that child. That is, to me, there is no downside when it comes to having your kids be able to learn with other kids that don't look like them, kids that, that, that don't, that have different cultural backgrounds. To me, that is what makes this country so great, is that there is, people say melting pot, some people say salad bowl, but we have everything in here, and that's what we have in Milford, that's amazing. That's, that is a boom for us, and we have to treat it like that.
John?
So I'm going to say indifferent, but I'd need to qualify that. I do agree with everything that Derek just said and, and what RJ just said, but it, it is what Milford was built on. Milford was and still is built on immigration. But with that immigration comes some challenges financially and staff wise. We talked about the EL challenges, those are real challenges. Chapter 70 increases based on, and again, that was reformulated a few years ago with a five-year rollout, so we're getting slightly more aid than we were for the same demographic or if we had the same demographic five years ago. But there's no denying that the influx of EL has severely impacted Gen Norjani and the entire EL program. So I, I see a lot of positives in, in culturally and emotionally and, you know, as a diverse community, that's all positive. But there are some short-term negative impacts that come with that immigration, and, and that, I think that's pretty much undeniable. So, you know, if, if this is the game show, my answer's indifferent because I, I, there's pluses and minuses.
Our diversity is something to be celebrated, and just speaking about our history with immigration, I know myself, my great, my great grandparents actually immigrated here from Italy a century ago, and my mom still lives on that same property. So I am proud of that heritage, and I am very excited by all of the different nationalities, ethnicities that are represented in Milford, and the fact that so many different individuals feel welcome in Milford. I know the fact that we have many people moving in leads to the different things around space that we're talking about, but I still think that's a great thing. It shows what a wonderful welcoming community we are. And it also means that we need to meet the needs of all of our students and all of their families. And so just keeping in mind as a district, as schools, what are we doing in terms of translation? What are we doing in terms of just differentiating instruction for the students? So it's a wonderful, wonderful thing and something we need to be constantly aware of.
The next question's going to be about special education. Does somebody want to venture forth and explain what special ed means?
I'm happy to. So special education, depending on your definition, so special education typically means referring to students with disabilities who are identified as having a disability and needing some type of modification or related service. However, if we use the term exceptionalities, that typically refers to students who could be with a disability in a special education program, or it could refer to students such as those that we would maybe call gifted, who have higher intellect or aptitude and achievement scores. So I think we could really, when we say special needs, we could consider both groups of students.
So now the question comes to you.
All right.
We invest a lot of money in special ed. Is it enough? Or should we change it?
Well, luckily for me, I do have some insight on this. I talked to Lucy Jenkins, who's the department head of, of special ed, and she told me that they don't have enough teachers, they don't, or their providers, they, they need more. And so we need to be able to not only provide, find a way to add, but we need to find a way to keep retention. We need, so to bolster the program is, to me, was the most important. We talk about space. Well, if we don't have enough space, it's hard to add on a lot of, a lot of people, right? But we can definitely try our best to make sure we keep who we have and make sure they're supported. Inside of a classroom, if we have a special, a, a child who has a special need and they need one-on-one, we need to be able to provide that. And that, that, to me, if I, so honored to be a part of the school committee, I will fight for that, I will look into it, and I will do my best to make sure we provide for every single child in this community.
John, are we doing right by what we're doing with special needs kids?
Well, so when you look at it, and if you look at it in a vacuum or in a bubble, no, we need to spend more, we need more space, we need more teachers. But we, we, as a school committee member, I don't look at it in that context completely because all of the things we just talked about, I think our special ed department does a fantastic job. I, I hear firsthand some of the, some of the pressing needs there, but it's, it's, it's a little bit of, I don't know, the answers, the question's misleading, the answer is, do we spend enough? No. But if we spend more, at what expense?
So in terms of special education, I think overall we do a really great job. One of the reasons I say that is for some of our kids with more substantial needs, whereas other districts might be quicker to spend, send them out of district, we're able to keep them in-house. I would actually like to see that increase. If we're able to keep even more students within our school district, we're not going to have to pay those out-of-district expenses, which are a major expenditure. And then we could take that money and use it to hire more TAs and BAs. Yes, we absolutely need more teachers too, but the TAs and BAs, they're the ones who are on the front lines with the students. Those are the ones who are directly working with them. When you're talking about a one-to-one, it's a TA or a BA. So we really need highly qualified individuals that are working directly with the kids. I also want to make sure as a district, we are maximizing our Medicaid reimbursement. So certain students, once they meet a certain threshold of the amount of services they need, we can get reimbursement from Medicaid. So I would want to look at that too and make sure that we're getting as much money back as we can.
RJ?
Yeah, I think we, I think we could always use more teachers and more support systems for those students. When you look at our numbers, those, that is a population that is ever rising in Milford, and that is a need that we need to continue to attend to. Just like all the other candidates said, it comes to then a matter of space, because right now when we have to have a special needs class, where is that going? Is that going in a hallway, is that going in a room closet? And then what are the outcomes of, of, of that class and that student? Are the outcomes good? Perhaps not if you're teaching the students in a room closet or a hallway because we have to make shifts in classrooms for these students. Like, you know, my colleague John said, there's, you know, it's a multifaceted problem. We have to look at space, we have to look at budgeting, and we have to look at all the other needs, but do we do enough right now? Yes, we're meeting the needs. Can we do more? Yes, I think we should be doing more.
Snap question. How would you respond to a question we've heard a number of times? Milford spends so much on the special needs kids, we're attracting kids from other towns.
All right, so I know, I personally know people who are looking for a school system. They have young families, and they have children who have special needs. I want the message to be, you can come here, you should come here, we will provide for you. I've been door knocking, talking to parents, and they have said the same thing. We, we came here because of this. I want that to continue. I believe that is something that's a positive, that we have parents who are saying, hmm, which town am I going to go to? We should be representative, representatives to say, this is the place. And so I, I'm fine with it, I'm positive over it. Like, come on, like, bring it in, bring it on. Like, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm a, I, I coach soccer, right, for my, for my daughter, and I did for my daughter, now I do for my, my younger son, and I am their biggest cheerleader. I'm the biggest fan, I'm the coach, and I'm there yelling, I'm screaming. I, I just want these children to understand that they have someone who's there for them, and the parents need to feel that too.
John?
I would say that, yes, our success at special ed has led to Milford being a very desirable place for, for parents to choice their kids into.
Robin?
Yeah, I would say what a compliment. Thank you for wanting to send your child here, and yes, we will educate them because we're here to educate all children, and if the Milford Public Schools is the right place for your child, we are happy to have them here, and thank you for thinking of us.
RJ?
Come one, come all. If you're going to ask me, hey, are we not going to build a new softball or football field because that might attract some kids from out of town who want to come play in Milford? Is that going to stop me? No, let's build a great soccer field and a great football field for our students, and if that attracts some, you know, good energy to Milford and wants people to move in, great, I welcome it.
Hot potato question, I always save for the end. COVID, has the school committee done what it should? Could they do something else?
Yeah, we, I think we've done what we should, which is to follow the guidelines of the health experts. If I was to look back, I could say that we probably, we, not just our school committee, but the state and the country could have done things differently, but hindsight is typically 2020. I think we made some very hard decisions, I think we looked at the considerations of all involved, and again, during my, during my year as chair, you know, I was the umpire that had the, you know, 51, 49% satisfaction rate, and I'm not sure which one was, was more in favor, but I don't think, looking back, there's much we would have done different at the time. Looking back now, I'd say there's things we could have, that, that we could have done differently, and I would have advocated for differently, but it, it comes with the, the evolution of the understanding.
Robin, what do you think?
Yeah, I mean, I would say as a parent looking in, not having been on the school committee, it appeared to me that the school committee and the district was really following the guidance of Dussey and the governor. And so that is logical, that makes sense, that, that's what the school committee needs to do. You know, I know this past Thursday, they voted to take off the masks or make them optional starting next Monday, and that's a decision I fully agree with. Again, just going back to what I said before, I do know though, prior to that meeting, there were a lot of parents just waiting for it with bated breath, and I don't necessarily have the right answer to it, but I just wish there was a way that it didn't feel like that, that parents felt like they kind of knew what was going on and knew more about the process, instead of just sitting there anxiously watching a school committee meeting to see, will my child have to wear a mask when they come back to school, or is that something I'll have an option to do?
RJ?
I don't want to look backwards.[1799.26] I don't want to look backwards. If I had to, I would say that we did everything we could with the information that we had at the time. It was ever-changing, conditions were changing, numbers of cases were changing, and so therefore regulations from DSE were continuously changing, and the district did its job keeping up with all those changing regulations. Going forward, is there a lot more, a lot more needs that we have to address that COVID caused? Absolutely, but do I think that our district did a good job during COVID? I think we did a great job, and I don't really want to be critical of the past, I want to go forward and focus on the future.
Derek.
So a fluid situation, isn't it? We just heard that there's another variant potentially out there. So we don't know where we're going to be in the future, right? But we do need to trust the science, we do need to trust the experts, we do need to trust the data. And the data is saying that we are at a point where we can take off masks. Okay, I trust that. My personal opinion on that, I was nervous when we came back from Christmas, New Year's break, right? Well, we're on February vacation. The kids are out there with everybody, they're about to come back. Well, gotta put some hope and faith out there and just hope that all the decisions we made by the experts were correct. But again, we don't know what the future holds, but we're doing the best in the moment, and I'm okay with this decision, because it's not the school committee. The school committee is using, again, the experts to decide where we go forward.
Well, RJ, you started us, so I guess Derek, you lead us off in the closing. I'm from Milford. Why should I vote for you?
I think you should vote for me because I'm a dad. I'm a dad here in town. I represent a diverse community, and I believe that we are inviting into this town, and I think I could help do that. I know that some people might not even understand what I'm saying, others will completely understand what I'm saying, but when you have the leadership look one way and a student body look different, you might be losing out on applicants. You might be losing out on actual potential qualified candidates for the school system. And I just want to be an advocate for the student body, for this faculty and staff, and my presence on that committee, I think, would help that.
John, why should I vote for you?
So, Al, thank you. I hope you'd vote for me because you've looked at and observed part of my body of work there as a six-year school committee member. Again, the work that I've done with six different committees, the things that we've accomplished, the challenges we've overcome, and also the challenges that we face. You can't highlight enough that facilities is what I think is, you know, our biggest challenge, and there might be some that are equal, but that's as big a challenge as any that we face. And I hope that you'll look at my municipal experience, my facilities experience, with my construction background, my inspections background. I hope you'll look at the challenges we face and have confidence that I am well-suited to help work to resolutions and goals with that. I think that my experiences, again, with town government in 20 years, town meeting member for a dozen or so, again, six years here, I look forward to hopefully being, you know, one of the two candidates here that does get elected and that we have a committee of two, three, two members that are in their third term, two in their second term, two in their first term, because I think it brings a really nice balance to the committee where we can focus on and collaborate with all of our experiences. And I just hope that, you know, the voters have enough confidence in me over what my body of work has done and said for itself or for myself, and that they'll give me one of their two votes.
Thank you. Robin, I'm from Milford. Why should I vote for you?
Milford's my home. After I graduated from Milford High School, like I said, I spent 10 years getting a doctorate in an education field, and then I've spent the last 10 years working in education. That experience and knowledge that I have, I want to use to help my community. My daughter is a student here. I love the fact that she is walking through the same halls that I did as a kid, and I just feel that I can do more than just help her, just advocate for her. I want to help all of her friends, I want to help all of her peers, I want to help all the students, older, younger than her. So I really want to be part of the school committee, to be able to help as many children in Milford as possible.
RJ, why should I vote for you?
Three years ago, I first ran for school committee, and after a long time of working hard and being committed to wanting to serve the committee, I finally was entrusted with the role of being a school committee member, and I've enjoyed every single minute of being a school committee member for the last seven months. And I don't think that my job as a school committee member is done. I still have the same commitment, care, passion, and drive to serve as the first day that I pulled papers, all the way back in 2019. And I'm hoping that your viewers will recognize the hard work, dedication, and time that I put into all my campaigns and the time that I've put into serving the committee, and they'll vote to give me a full term on our committee.
First of all, I want to say thank you for coming here, taking time out of your busy lives to let our viewers, all six of them, get to know you, if they didn't know you before. But more importantly, I tip my hat for the four of you being people who not only have opinions, but are willing to stand up and work towards making life a little better for our 4,500 kids. So from the deepest part of my heart, thank you. Anybody who's watched the show knows that I'll never ask you to vote for any specific candidate, but I'll beg you to get to know the candidates, whether you watch this show, whether you go to the senior center. I loved when they had the forums at the high school, because then everybody got educated, kids and all. Get to know the person who you trust to take care of your children and everybody else's children in Milford. Get to know the person and their values, because high school's going to be the most formative years for the rest of their lives. And then please, this I will beg you, get out and vote. Pick two people of these four that you believe will best represent you and your values and give them the vote. Then hold them to it. But as always, Milford's always taking care of their kids. I've always felt very proud that every town meeting I go to, I've never seen town meeting members or the people they represent not take care of our kids. And the four of you are great examples, so thank you again. And as always, may tomorrow be a better night than tonight. May God bless, and let's hope that everything works out for the betterment of our children and their education. Good night, all.